Good evening, everyone. I want to reconvene our earlier meeting from today. And I need to see if the Board would like to amend the agenda for the item. There's only one item matters presented by the Board that we could put later in the evening, or we could wait until another day.
I think we, it's always useful to have that as our touchstone. So I do think if we could reorganize the agenda, so that could fall after old business, item P I, P one temporary signs, if we could do it after that, but before adjournment, that would be most helpful.
Okay, so basically, P two?
Yes, please.
All right.
That is my motion. Thank you, dear.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it. That seems to be the theme today.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. We are going into public hearings now. Ready, Mr. Curry?
Yes, Ms. Summers will give an introduction to the public hearing for special exception 240305.
Thank you. Harmony Manor B and B LLC, owners of tax map number 28-52F located at 65 Clark Lane, have applied for a special exception to operate a five-bedroom bed and breakfast. The property is 29 acres in size, and it is zoned as agriculture. The structure currently serves as a primary residence of Carol and Donna Hendrickson, and also serves as a tasting room for Little Washington Winery, which is located on an adjacent parcel accessed from Christmas Tree Lane. Clark Lane has a 30-foot private right-of-way. The Hendricksons currently have an open permit for lane disturbance to improve a portion of Clark Lane by repairing the roadway within the existing right-of-way by removing the existing hard pavement and millings and replace the surface with a wider travelway using millings. The first approximately 295 feet of Clark Lane has not been improved and remains approximately 12 feet in width. The approved plans that are on file for this project call for roadside ditches, which do not exist in the field, as they are shown on the submitted plan and the type-two road standards. Staff has evaluated Clark Lane and found that it neither matches the design included on the erosion and sediment control plans nor type-two road standards, which standard is mandatory, special standard included in the Rappahannock County Code 17066K6 for B and B establishments. Beyond the mandatory type-two road standard, the Rappahannock County Code includes regulation related to vehicle access to uses in the county. The listed pertinent regulations identify Clark Lane, along which the applied-for-use is located, is currently existing in a condition that is not conforming with the zoning ordinance because it currently serves more than five lots and does not meet a type-one road standard. Staff does not recommend allowing additional uses that are not permitted by right unless access issues are brought into conformity with the county code. Further, the entrance of private, of the private right-of-way Clark Lane to the public road system is located within the Commercial General Zoning District and specifically within the General Commercial Overlay District. As was referenced by VDOT in their letter, access management concerns are present with the location of Clark Lane relative to the adjacent commercial exit from the co-op. The two entrances onto Route 211, 522 are essentially immediately adjacent. The zoning ordinance states that in no instances shall the distance between entrances serving adjacent land uses be less than 40 feet. The Health Department commented on this application that the septic system is permitted for a six-bedroom, 12-person occupancy. On May 28th of this year, it was inspected and approved for one meal a day for on-site food to guests, and they approved the use of the five guest rooms. VDOT's comments, however, have not changed since their prior comments from August the 12th of 2022, which were and still are. Clarify whether the use will function as a private five-bedroom home, or will there be other activities used, including any available to patrons other than the tenants? Will each bedroom be granted out as individual lodging units to different tenants? Two, based on previous discussion with the county and applicant, there are multiple lane uses that share Clark Lane as an access onto Route 211. Parties with a vested interest in Clark Lane should consider improving the existing entrance on Route 211 based on total traffic volume and types of vehicle, vehicles using the entrance. Three, consider working with the farm co-op to improve the existing shared entrance condition or eliminating it. Four, consider special exception conditions that would help ensure that there are no substantial traffic impacts at that entrance. Possibly place a time limit on the permit so that if any issues or complaints, they can be addressed and any needed improvements can be implemented. And lastly, any large event should obtain a VDOT land use permit for special events to ensure that adequate traffic control is provided. The Planning Commission held their public hearing on this application on June 17th, after which they recommended denial of the application by vote of five to zero to one due to the existing entrance, Clark Lane, on Route 211, not meeting the standard as detailed in the staff report. This use is not permitted by right and requires a special exception so that it can be compatible, and it is the burden of the applicant to satisfy such requirement found in the general standards. This public hearing has been noticed in the local newspaper pursuant to 15.22204, and adjacent landowners have been notified.
I want to make sure it's clear for the record since we have excellent record-keeping tonight. Those last statements by Michelle are speaking to Rappahannock County Code Section 17047C that states uses which would normally not be allowed in a particular zoning district may be allowed by special permit or special exception because they impose conditions and restrictions to the use in order to make it compatible with the by-right uses in that zoning district. And also 17047G, a special permit or special exception will only be granted if the applicants can satisfy the requirements of Article Six, this Article Six, and the proposed use is otherwise lawfully permitted. The burden is on the applicant to satisfy such requirements.
All right. At this time, I will go ahead and open the public hearing with regards to SE number 24-03-05, Harmony Manor B and B LLC.
It might, it's typically customary to allow the applicant to present if they're so inclined.
Okay. Would you like to speak first?
Good evening. My name is Lee Baines. I am a licensed engineer, professional engineer. Name of my company is Henshian Baines, and we're located in Culpeper, Virginia. We've been engaged by the Hendricksons for, to do an analysis on the entrance. Now, I'm here just strictly for the entrance and not for the private road. Just want to be clear on that before we get started. So the entrance has to do mainly with VDOT comments, the comment letter dated April 5th, So the, as far as number one, I think Michelle read off the, each one of the comments, and so I'm going to go through those one by one, try to do that rather quickly. Number one is to clarify that the use will function as a private, whether it will function as a private five-bedroom home. It's actually going to have five rooms to be, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hendrickson, but five rooms of those are going to be rented, short-term rentals. The sixth bedroom is owner-occupied. So there'll be five of those bedrooms that will be rented. They could be one night, two nights, but they'll be short-term rentals. As far as other, other individuals that are not tenants, they do wine tastings, my understanding, for one of the adjacent wineries. And in our trip generation analysis for the entrance, we did make that consideration. Now, I did provide a, a response letter and a report to the zoning administrator. It was this afternoon. I was engaged a little late in the process, so I do have a hard copy of this that I'm reading from tonight. The, so she has a PDF copy, and I'll, I'll leave a hard copy with her tonight. There are farm activities available for the guests, and I think he has disc golf, but he also has the wine tastings and any farm activities. Number two is, based on previous discussions with the county and applicant, there are multiple land uses that share Clark Lane, has access to Route 211. Parties with a vested interest in Clark Lane should consider improving the entrance based on total traffic volume and types of vehicles using the entrance. Typically, in this situation, we would do a trip generation analysis for VDOT, and that is included in my report. Basically, what I did is I compared, compared the existing condition to a proposed condition. The existing condition including single-family dwellings, a tasting room, a vacant lot that's there, and the farm and home center. Now, I want to be clear about the entrance. This is a combined entrance, but the combined entrance is actually located in the VDOT right-of-way. This combined entrance has been there since at least 1958, based on aerial photography that I've been able to do research with. I do have a aerial photography from 1997 from Google Maps or Google Earth that shows that as combined entrance, too. So that, that entrance has been there in this condition for quite a number of years, certainly predating any of the access management standards. So in the existing condition, what I have is a total of about 130 vehicles per day that would use that entrance. Now, that includes the seven single-family dwellings at 10 unit, 10 trips per day, a tasting room, which is about 30 vehicles a day, the vacant lot I rated at the same rate as a single-family residence, which is 10 vehicles a day, and the farm and home center. Now, that's an exit-only where that, where that entrance is, and we call it an entrance, but it means exit or entrance. And we assigned 20 vehicles a day to that exit-only. That's 130 trips. The background traffic on Route 211 is about 4,738 average daily traffic. That's from the 2002 VDOT traffic counts. So we've estimated less than 200 vehicles a day, and the background traffic is less than 500, 5,000 vehicles a day. So this entrance would qualify as a partial access, moderate-volume commercial entrance under the VDOT Road Design Manual, Appendix F, Figure 4-15. In the, in the proposed condition, we had a lot of the same background trips. We would change one of the single-family dwellings to a bed and breakfast. Bed and breakfast in the Institute for Transportation Engineers Manual is not a use, but we typically use the hotel, which is use number 310. Generally accepted to be about eight vehicles per day per room. So what I did was change this number to six, six beds, six bedrooms at eight vehicles a day. So that, that adds about 38 vehicles a day. So in the proposed condition, we're 168 vehicles per day, and the existing condition 130. This is still less than 200 vehicles a day, which still qualifies for the moderate-volume commercial entrance. Now, the moderate-volume commercial entrance, the second thing I did was look at the configuration of this entrance. And these are, these are not precise measurements because it's a little difficult with the configuration of the entrance with the co-op's entrance coming in. But the minimum width, 25 feet back from the edge of pavement, in this case, it'd be 25 feet back from the, the lane marking, has to be a minimum of about 18 feet. My measurements are, I'd say, fairly imprecise, but it's approximately 18 feet wide minimum. It does meet the minimum. I believe it meets the minimum width at, at the throat. So the, the minimum radii on the entrance should be 25 feet. So I believe in the end that this entrance does, you know, does meet the standard for moderate-volume entrance under the VDOT standards, and but I wanted to emphasize that the entrance has been in place for quite a number of years. And, you know, under the access management regulations, it is eligible for grandfathering. So that does take a process, possibly an access management exception, but in talking with the owner, he's willing to go through that process. I'll take any questions that you have.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So you're an engineer, and you were, you were retained by the applicant to look at the entrance.
Correct.
And so I'm struggling to hear from you, your bottom line, are you saying that this shared entrance, setting aside the fact that it's been there since the 1950s, that it's shared with another business in a commercial overlay district, and setting aside however many bedrooms that they will have for transient occupancy, are you saying that your bottom-line conclusion as an engineer is that, that entrance as it currently exists is fine, and that it's safe for a commercial operation in a agricultural zone?
I believe it is, yes.
Okay. And if you were to bottom-line that, what, what specifically should we take into account, given your engineering-based analysis of it? Like, what, what makes it safe?
Well, it meets the VDOT standards. And the VDOT standards are a typical width for an entrance that has a certain trip generation, and it has to experience a certain number of vehicles. And that's where we are.
So it sounds like your analysis comes down to trip generation related to what, what the applicant is proposing to do with the
That's correct, yes.
the building they have. And would you say that that's your sole, that's the sole basis for your conclusion that it's safe? It's just a matter of counting cars and saying that?
Well, also, you know, we'd also look at site distance, but, you know, that was not a, that was not brought up by VDOT. But in visiting the site, this is a partial access entrance. It's right in, right out.
Yeah.
It's a 55 mile-an-hour zone. That requires a certain site distance. But in visiting the site, and I was there today, you clearly have over 600 feet of, at least 600 feet of site distance, possibly more. So in that respect, we'd look at the site distance. We'd also look at the trip, the trip generation because that decides what size and configuration the entrance should be.
So site distance and number of trips is basically what we get down to?
Generally, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board. Greg Ashwell, on behalf of the applicant. I feel like I know this place pretty well vis-a-vis this, this application because we've been here on numerous occasions. At the inception of the application process, the Hendricksons tried to do a lot of it themselves, and here's where we are because of that, perhaps. I don't think I need to bang the drum too much on the importance of agrotourism here in Rappahannock from a political standpoint. And this is truly the only board that has a political dog in the fight, so to speak, because you run for office, the other ones we talked to are appointed. But if it's truly important to the county of Rappahannock to, you know, induce people to put agrotourism-type businesses here, the Hendricksons met that. When they came out here to originally look into purchasing Harmony Manor, they talked to the county, they, they asked about the B and B, the then-B and B permit that was valid with Randy Ford, and whomever they talked to is a person who's long gone, said, "You got a permit, run a B and B, get out of here." So they go, they buy this place. It's a huge investment for them. And now we're back yet again because of the manner in which things were done over the years. And you read from the Summers report, there's a laundry list of problems, perhaps, or situations that ran up in the past. But the bottom line is, it was run as a permitted B and B by Randy Ford, purchased by the Hendricksons, and run successfully as a B and B for some time, until a violation was alleged about supposedly some type of retail sales from that particular place that was not appropriate. The Hendricksons, to their dismay now, and that's it, once they talked to an attorney, did not choose to escalate that, that issue with the county. So they, they took their lumps, and they went back, and they tried to do it the right way. That's when I get involved. At one point in time, they go to the county because they wanted a copy of the file, just to see what they were dealing with. They were told the file had been lost. They were shown a copy of their permit, B and B permit, and a person at the county said, "For all I know, that could be photoshopped." I'm thinking, seriously? That was uttered? If someone really thought someone photoshopped a permit, they have an obligation to contact the police because forgery of public record is a felony, but that didn't happen. So they went back, licking their wounds, came to me. So we initially filed, when, at a time when we came before the BCA, Mr. McCallum was on that board, and he's here present tonight. And the issue for them to deny the request was the quality of the road did not meet type-two standards. Type-two standards that have been placed since the inception of the zoning permit are required for any place that has more than five lots. Clearly, this applies, yet the county didn't do anything about the five or seven lots that are up there because of the concern over this road. Be that as it may, the denial took place, they fixed it. According to their information and their belief and their contact with an engineer about that road, it's up to standards now. They moved the road into the deeded right-of-way. So that's been taken care of. So they come back again, here before the Planning Commission, again, without counsel. This time, the Planning Commission says, "We're going to deny it because the entrance is not good enough." And they come back to me saying, "What are we going to do? We fixed the thing BCA told us was wrong. We come back, now we got another thing that the Planning Commission tells us is wrong." That was the sole reason for the denial set forth in your documents. The, the entrance is not safe, or whatever you want to call it. Been around since 58. I'm not familiar with any major problems with that entrance. But they suggest that the landowners and the co-op get together and improve this right-of-way, or this exit. What did the Hendricksons do? They go to the co-op and say, "Look, we're going to pay for this. Can you help us get this done?" Their answer? No. So you're setting up through the Planning Commission, and a vote against this would be an unreasonable, if not impossible, condition for the issuance of this particular permit. You want them to unilaterally go on a VDOT right-of-way, grade it, fix that to some kind of standard that you're all satisfied with, and also you've got to talk about the right-of-way that is next up. I'm not sure the little house at the bottom. They have no control over that either. So they continue to refile, reapply, fixing each problem as they identified by the, by the county. But now the county, through its zoning administrator, and the VDOT letter does not say they must do this. It's almost like aspirational thing. "Gosh, it would be nice if we had a better entrance and an exit for the co-op." Look into that. They can't. That's not something they have the legal or physical ability to do. They can't say, "Look, co-op, we're going to close that little entrance for you, we're going to make a little cutoff here, we're going to serve all these fine people that live up here, make it safer for all of them." They can't do that. And again, if, if this type of road was a problem since 1958, why are we here in 2024 holding it against only them? Just want that on the record. The Hendricksons can only do so much when it comes to continuing with an operation that they used their due diligence when they came out here, talked to county staff, got the okay to run a B and B, which was then permitted without the problem of this type-two road, without the problem of the other people in the neighborhood. All of a sudden, it becomes a problem and Carl and Donna try to get an application through. I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Judge Ashwell. It's good to see you.
Thank you.
And it's, it's different to see you there than
I'm usually, I used to be up there a lot.
I know, and I'm mindful of that. We know you're a pro. I'm just, I really don't have questions, but at the risk of, at the risk of testing a, testing a retired judge on some statements made, I'm going to test the statements you made.
Feel free.
And these really are asides because you're, they're asides to, I think, our, whatever decision might be on the permit application, but I think still important to address and let you know at least as the local representative for this voting district in which the Hendricksons are operating their various commercial operations. Number one, while the Code of Virginia provides property owners great latitude under the various applicable, applicable provisions related to agrotourism, as one member of our board in beautiful Rappahannock County, which we want to keep to the extent possible exactly the way it is, I am unwilling to throw public safety and public safety concerns aside because the state legislature tells us that agrotourism is, at least by, by the plain language of those applicable provisions of the Code of Virginia, is somehow a free-for-all. And so, number one, when I, when I look at agrotourism operations, I look through two lenses. Number one, are these bona fide agricultural operations or are they commercial operations that have been characterized as agrotourism operations to take advantage of what leniency the Code of Virginia provides property owners? That's the first thing. And the second thing is, when it, when these agrotourism-type uses come down to a locality like ours, I think that we would absolutely not be doing our job if we ever were so blinded by a chase for agrotourism-related revenue that we threw the public safeties, the safety of the public's interests to the wind in this regard. So while I can appreciate, and while I have respect for the Hendricksons and, and what good, and I've told them this directly, what good marketers they are, I'm just going to go at one of your opening premises and say to you that I'm not convinced that there are any bona fide agricultural operations on that property whatsoever. That being said, I then ask the question whether we should be talking about agrotourism in this context at all. And I personally think that it is a red herring. I think it is a distraction, and I think it is, to put it bluntly, not a correct lens with which we should be viewing this application. And if I were convinced that the Hendricksons had bona fide agricultural, agricultural operations like other wineries in our county who grow grapes and produce wine, then maybe, just maybe, in that context, we could have a meaningful discussion about what the Code of Virginia permits in terms of agrotourism-related operations in localities like ours. But it is hard for me to get that, to that threshold question about what agrotour, what agrotourism should permit when a zoning ordinance clearly lays out standards that property owners are required to meet to be an exception to an other, to a by-right use. So I, I admire you as an attorney, and I appreciate very much that you have a job to do for your clients. I just want to be clear that I am, it is hard for me to buy into any agrotourism argument in the context of this application. So I just wanted to point that out, and I'm not, I'm not commanding a response or
Well, you said you wanted an answer, so I'm going to give you one.
Okay, good.
Okay. First, I use the term agrotourism as a general term because here in Rappahannock, we have been, I was a judge here for, for been, I was a judge here for, it seemed like forever, 14 years, but it's like my adopted home. And I get the way we feel about things out here. You don't have to convince me of that. However, when I use the term agritourism, I'm talking about in generalities clean commercial uses. And there have been changes in the state law about agritourism and overriding perhaps the locality's ability to somehow alter the use that a person wants to use. This was not applied for under agritourism. So to the extent you need to throw that lens away, please feel free. This is a B and B, but I want to get back. You stated you were concerned about public safety, and based upon the Planning Commission's denial based solely on the turnoff, I'm thinking that's what you're talking about, even though you didn't really state that. And so you want us to meet a condition that is factually and legally impossible, which to us is prima facie evidence of arbitrary position taken that you know we can't do. I'm going to deny this because you can't, you don't, you won't put in a turn lane. As to which, we can't put in a turn lane. It's been there since 58 without incident. And if it was such a problem for the local people, why didn't the county, whomever, get with the V dot and say, "You've got to stop the car. Look at all the things that are taking place right here at the co-op." Well, they didn't do that because since 1958, really hasn't been a problem. And based upon the only uncontroversial evidence, well, Ms. Summers stated something from her, what her staff found, but that's not necessarily evidence of engineering quality. This man said, "It's not really a problem." The only evidence you have is that the turnoff lane is not a problem. So when the problem initially with BCA was the width and quality of the road, we fixed that to our standards, to what we believe type-two standards are. Okay, we came back, and now it's, oh, it's not really that. It's the turnoff. So it's almost the epitome of changing the goalpost in the middle of the game. If we get denied here for that reason, and somehow we magically fix this turnoff, what would be the next reason when we apply for it? It's not going to be under agritourism. We just want to do a bed and breakfast.
If I could ask your engineering counterpart, I know your focus was on the entrance, but let's talk about the road. Did you look at the road? Did you drive down the road? Did you evaluate the road?
The Rappahannock Road?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so can you comment? I assume the answer is no, but I'll ask anyway. Are you able to comment on whether it meets the type-two road standard that we require for uses such as this under our zoning ordinance? Does it meet type-two road standards? Okay.
I just wanted to say a few things real quick. If it's not, I'm interrupting. I can interrupt if you're on a roll. I did want to make a statement, which I had made at the Planning Commission, which is that my, one of my members of my family had worked for the Hendricksons at one point in time. He no longer works for them. I don't believe I'm required to recuse myself. And so I will not recuse myself, but I just wanted to state that for the record. I did want to review the minutes that the Planning Commission passed, which I think maybe more closely mirrors the discussion at the Planning Commission level than what was documented in the staff report. And it says, "The commission discussed the application for a bed and breakfast. They discussed how the multiple uses of the properties were disruptive to the neighbors," to which I would add, "I know that many of them are permitted under agritourism and therefore considered by right, and so those were not will be discussed. They also had concerns regarding the entrance to the property off 211, noting that part had not been improved. Mr. Light moved to recommend denial of the application due to not meeting the road standards. Mr. Atkins seconded. The motion carried 5001 with Mr. Sisk abstaining." I just wanted to read that for the record so that we had an accurate reflection of the minutes adopted by the Planning Commission.
And if I may address that before we move on, and I think we refinished them.
Yes.
Okay. All I can go by is a record of decisions signed by your county zoning administrator, which states, "The condition of the existing entrance does not meet the standard as detailed in the staff report." That's the sole reason. The minutes may say that, but the written document you all, whomever, Ms. Summers prepared on the county's behalf speaks to a different issue. And I'll put that with the record, with the report before you all already have. You see, two, one, seven, forty-seven. Does it name a permit for them?
One comment that I would like to make, because 1958 keeps coming up. There was probably four houses on Clark Lane in 1958, if that. And I don't know factually what that is, but to compare to 1958, that's not even a comparison that should come out because events that bring in 50, 75, 100 people makes a totally different conversation. And I don't know if your records were done thinking about events, but they do happen fairly frequently. They do put on events. And so the standard car down the road on a standard day is great, but the day that they're having a grisbee contest or a, I think you did a race or something, where you have a lot of cars, I don't know that you gathered that information. And so I just, I think using 1958 is...
Yeah, I think the 58 was a touchstone basis for, to today. So what we do, we had the same type road essentially since 1958 to today. But what I'm trying to say, if it's so dangerous in and of itself, but violates the very core of the zoning requirements, well, why aren't they talking to all these people who use it on a daily basis that don't maintain it? I mean, we have seven people there, seven lots, or whatever it is now, and it's not a problem until the Hendricksons apply. Now, you're talking about special events. If you did see in the staff report, if there are special events, by crackey, they've got to apply for a permit. And the thing that we need to remember in our vote tonight, you can put reasonable conditions on this permit. You can put a, somebody said, maybe, Ms. Summers said, "What about two years? Okay, what about some kind of sunset? See how it goes." And you can do that. But your refusal to do that calls into question the real basis for the denial of the application, if that's where we're going with this. That's why I wanted to address that.
I fear, I fear we've been talking for 40 minutes, and we're supposed to have a public hearing.
Yes, ma'am.
So I do, I do hope we will have a public hearing. I think we're drifting into board dissection.
I think we're wrapping up.
That's great. Thank you so much.
If I'm just answering the questions I'm getting.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
You've been heard. Thank you.
Yep. All right. Yes, sir.
I guess, Kier, it's my turn to ask a couple of questions. What is agritourism, then? We've got three acres of grapes that are growing in there on one side of the road. We've got another three acres of grapes that are growing on the other side of the road. We've got fiddlehead ferns that we're harvesting in the spring, and I've planted 150 fruit trees and 150 peach trees and 150 apple trees. If you look at some of those older photos that Lee has, that entire property was a peach orchard and an apple orchard. It's fascinating to look at those pictures because there's, I don't know, 40, 50, 60 acres with peach trees and apple trees. I would like to bring that back, and I'm working on it now with about 300 trees that have been added. Now, that is agritourism. Now, let me talk a little bit about the legal business. We have a brewery, and we are growing hops on the farm. And one of the questions my ABC agent asked me, he said, "Carl, are you using fruit off the farm?" And I said, "Yes, I am." And he said, "How are you documenting that?" And I said, "I put it on the recipe." So we are harvesting hops off the farm, and we are using them in some of the beers that we produce. It's a Cascade hops. So we do have agriculture going on there. And next year, these are dwarf peaches and dwarf apples. We'll be using both the apples and the peaches for beer and wine, and we will also be doing a pick-your-own harvesting event each spring and fall. That's why we chose the apples and the peaches. So we are an agritourism business, and we are very proud of what we're doing there. As for the disc golf, that's a fun one, and when we do have an event, the parking is on Christmas Tree Lane. I have no parking up there for the many, the number of cars that we have coming to one of those events. And we'll have, on Christmas Tree Lane, we'll have anywhere from 20 to 60 cars parked up there. And that works very well, and nobody comes to play disc golf, parks on Clark Lane. Nobody. They may come in there, and they say, "Where is the hole number one?" And I say, "It's over there, and go find the parking lot down there." So the disc golf is kind of a bogus issue because all the parking is done on Christmas Tree Lane. What events we have here are mostly wine classes. When we did wine boot camp for the very first time, I put the ad out, and we had 1,700 people sign up for that wine boot camp. We waded through those 1,700 people, and all of a sudden, they came back to us, which is my MBA saying, "Let the customers drive you." And so that's what we're trying to accomplish, and they came back to us and said, "That was really fun. What's next?" So we put together some food-to-you classes, and we generally run 10 cars a day, 10 cars in the morning, 10 cars in the afternoon if we have a full class. So that is agritourism, and they're learning about the grapes that we're growing, the wines that we're producing, and the wines that we're bringing in from places all over the world. So we are agritourism. And I think to suggest anything other than that is unacceptable. Unacceptable. Now, what else? Let me talk a little bit about tax generation, because I'm now in front of a political body, and I love political bodies. Because you guys are concerned about a million and a half dollars from the state legislature, I can generate $20,000 to $50,000 in gross revenue off that property that you're not going to see. And yes, I can, Kier, don't shake your head. Because for every dollar that is spent in the county as a tourism dollar, when I was on the Board of Supervisors in Loudoun County, the Economic Development Director said, "That dollar bounces 11 times before it leaves the county." Three of my employees who are full-time live outside the county, so they take that paycheck with them. So I don't think we're doing an 11-time bounce. I suspect we're doing about a five-time bounce. That means it spends here five times before it leaves. So I think there's some huge, huge economic benefits to having these guys come here, spend their tax dollars here, and the county then generates a 6% tax revenue or 5% tax, lodging tax off of that, 4%. Okay, which is a whole lot more than 1% of the 5% of the sales tax that I collect. So, questions?
I just think that we would do wise not to get bogged down and conflate the issue before us this evening, or the decision before us this evening, with agritourism. I think this is a completely different...
The only reason I raised it...
I know, and I appreciate it.
Because they did so.
I do appreciate it, but I do think that conflating this application with agritourism, when I think the notion of by-right tourist homes was in front of the legislature a few years ago as an agritourism endeavor, and it was rejected. I think to confuse this discussion and make it an agritourism discussion is a mistake. And I certainly think anything we can do to support agritourism is great. I also want the people that reside in places to enjoy their peaceful properties.
One last point. If you're going to be supportive of agricultural industry in the county, and this is a critical one, and Kier and I have had this conversation, the nature of the county population has changed dramatically over the course since 1950, because Donna saw something in an article that said in Little Washington, there were six pubs in Little Washington. Dang, where'd they go? They didn't go, they went someplace else because the nature of the population changed because there is no agricultural industry any longer. The Farm Co-op was a fruit processing plant. It was a fruit processing plant. And the reason it didn't exist or doesn't exist any longer is because those peach trees and those apple trees are gone from that property. And I would love dearly to put them back, and an additional revenue stream would allow that to happen much more quickly. Okay, questions?
I appreciate your argument, Mr. Hendrickson, and I know you have said before comments about how much revenue you would generate, and certainly, we always love ways to generate revenue and avoid tax increases. However, we also have a zoning ordinance, and we also have to make decisions based on that zoning ordinance.
Fair enough. One last question. One last question for you guys as a body. On that intersection of Clark Lane to 211, how many accidents have been out there? For your safety question. How many accidents have been out there? I would suggest none. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I think we're now moving into the public comment, or the public here. And if you wish to speak, please be recognized. When you get up to the mic, give us your name and your district, and we'll keep the comments to five minutes.
So you're opening a public hearing?
Opening the public here.
I'm Brian Schultz. My wife and I live in the Hampton District on Clark Lane. The battle against a B and B at 65 Clark Lane began in 2004 when the first owner operated a B and B without a permit. There have been three owners of 65 Clark Lanes. All three knew a B and B would be contested. I can tell you 20 years' worth of problems with you about the B and B on Clark Lane, but I don't think I need to. The staff report spells out clearly why there should not be a B and B on Clark Lane. Planning Commission unanimously recommended denial. Please follow their recommendations and deny this S U P. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is John Jock Nash in the Hampton District. So much has gone on since 2004 on this property. We've had B and Bs allowed, but the owners always, always ignored the rules. Instead of a two-person B and B, they did four, or five, or more. You could tell by the cars. We drive up there all the time back in the day. It got so bad that they had to revoke the B and B. And they even gave the Hendricksons, the applicant, some time to cancel weddings and to do all this other stuff, and not to have the revocation happen for X number of months, which was good, and good government. But even then, during that probationary period, they still broke the rules. Carl didn't fall off the turnip cart on the way into town. He used to be a supervisor. He knows what the rules are. He ought to follow them. I wish that we had the enforcement personnel, like Faukeer County. It looks like a high school reunion with like 30 people out there, and a lot of them are just zoning enforcement. And it is, Carl is a hard-working man. The place is beautiful. There is no doubt about that. But as far as, I had to lock up all four wheels coming down at 15 miles an hour because a guest from out of town was going to the winery and was coming up at 35. And we all locked up our rakes and everything. And it was, it happens, not with the residents, and not with locals, but out-of-town people see that nice wide chip road, and they just, they go for it. It's not safe. It's a safety issue, and it's a zoning enforcement issue. And I really appreciate all the time that the Rappahannock County government has worked on this problem, written all the briefs for all of us, and I appreciate all of your attention to this. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Yoko Barsky from Hampton District, and we are direct neighbors, just about how many manor. This was, this application is for the five-bedroom B and B, but it's been always, the problem has been always... been always the road and an entrance. And the number of the trips may be small enough for five-bedroom B&amp;B that can be acceptable, but we have to take in consideration that agritourism added on to it in the narrow entrance, and that does not qualify for agritourism according to the VDOT. It happened to Mr. Shuland, the Planning Commission also. He mentioned when he came to a visit, was that he had to stop on the highway because a car was coming down on a Clark Lane and somebody else was going out of the co-op parking. That happens quite often these days, and we have to actually stop, full stop, on the highway, 211. And it doesn't matter how many trips are calculated, but these things do happen. That's a reality. And that can cause safety issues. Mr. Hendrickson says there has not been accidents. It's almost happening every time, almost every day. So please take that in consideration. It's always the entrance. And co-op said they're not interested in cooperating to make the entrance together. So that's, that almost is set. That was at the Planning Commission as well. We would rather not to have this permit, but agritourism continues in any case. And there's no provisions in the zoning ordinance of Rappahannock County about agritourism. So I don't know where the county stands on that, but it's also something to be defined. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Yoko.
Ron Mackelup in Jackson District. And I'm familiar with this issue. There's two problems that I see with this, and it's not just this particular location, but in other locations also, and particularly with B&amp;Bs. And it has to do with private lanes, in that people buy property on private lanes, and basically, they are part owners of that access to their property. And when issues come up for zoning issues or whatever, to a certain extent, on a special permit like this, whatever, the property owners on the lane should have a substantial say in what goes on. It should not be the government, you know, the government should not come in and go, you know, we're telling you what this one person can do on the lane that you own. And that's sort of what we do. And we really ought to look at our zoning and our permitting process and perhaps, you know, bring that factor into it. Because there's nobody on Clark Lane that wants this permit issued. And I think that should be a strong factor in the decision-making process. And then in this case, the other issue, which has been talked about or whatever, is that in order to be safe, there has to be a deceleration lane coming in there. So because if people are coming out, people, you can't have people stopping on 211 in the traffic lane with their turn signal on, waiting for one or two, three cars or whatever that are coming out, trying to get out. And so that's the safety issue, and I don't know why VDOT doesn't address that. But in this case, that's it. And the other issue on this property is that you go down 100, 200 feet down the road to Christmas Tree Lane, and there is a deceleration lane. And you go, and you turn up, and you can go up to the applicant's property. And in this whole process, I've never been able to figure out why he just doesn't make an access road that can take people up to his property on Clark Lane. So with all these, I mean, there's all these factors that come together, but it's just not the right place for what he's trying to do. And, you know, that's what we deal with here, and that's how we make our decisions. And I hope you make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
I think this thing has been going on for a long, long time, and I think it's better to put aside the past history of what had happened before, because what's past is over and done with, and you can't do anything about it. In my opinion, the current owners bought something that they thought was going to be viable, apparently found out that it wasn't, so have been trying for a while to find some viable way of making a living out here in Rappahannock County. And I've watched some of their progress of the vineyard and then planting the trees for orchards and things like that. I, just as an aside, when I went to Roy's Orchard one time, I asked Janet, I said, you used to have a lot of apple trees. And she said, oh, yeah, but then when the stuff started, the industry started dying out, we had to diversify. We had to find something else to do. So now, a lot of people go down that little itty-bitty road to their place, and they buy pies and ice cream and all kinds of good stuff. So it's somebody who had an industry of apples and then had to diversify because it's gone. We used to have 300 acres of apple trees. They're all gone. The Eileen factory is gone. I give credit to this applicant who has been trying to figure out a way to make a good presence in this county. And by the, by planting apple trees and that kind of thing, I think he is trying to be a good citizen of this county. I think there have been some fusses with neighbors and things, but neighbors can learn to talk together and perhaps find common ground to make things work. Now, what I heard this evening was an engineer who brought up the fact, addressed the entrance, and said that entrance meets the moderate volume entrance requirements and the site distances of VDOT. So that entrance apparently satisfies what VDOT has said for that type of an entrance. And then the other gentleman, I didn't catch his name, mentioned something. There seems to be a viable way forward. And I think the suggestion was, try it for a year, do it with, put some conditions on it, and put it for a year, and see what happens. We've heard of instances on 211 where these people are driving down the wrong way and all kinds of things. Ms. Smith had an incident today. She said about how she saw something honk her horn, and she said, there are just people who are just, I would say stupid. You are more polite. You know, so there are people, you are going to have the occasional tourist who's going to drive down a road too fast. I don't think that's the majority of what we're doing. I think there are ways to address it. So I think this could be resolved in a more pleasant, in a better way. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Karen Hunt, Jackson District. I'll just start by saying that a special use permit is just that. It's special, and it is not a by right use. I've researched this property, and I find very troubling, the repeat pattern of violations and requests for expansion that began with the original owners of the property in 2012. They have continued with the current owners, and I would disagree with Ms. Gressinger that we should set all that aside, because I think patterns of behavior are indicative of possible and potential future patterns of behavior, and it does bear consideration. Clark Lane is a private road that is neither properly configured nor structurally adequate to comply with our zoning ordinance requirements for the intensity of use that has repeatedly been sought on this property. While I applaud the applicant's efforts to improve Clark Lane, those improvements do not fully address the outstanding issues that exist. And despite the applicant's contentions, the Clark Lane entrance does not meet either VDOT or county requirements. VDOT has stated there are multiple uses that share the Clark Lane access to Route 211, and that the shared entrance with the co-op should either be improved or eliminated. VDOT also referenced that the county should impose conditions to ensure there are no substantial traffic impacts at the entrance. A representative for the co-op stated at the Planning Commission meeting that they are not interested in making any changes to the Clark Lane entrance. The staff report indicates the road does not meet type 2 requirements in several areas, including crown height, shoulder minimum, side ditches, and receiving channels. During a farm tour several years ago, I accompanied someone to a wine tasting at the Skyline Vineyard. I recall inadvertently passing the winery entrance of Clark Lane, then encountering a neighbor's sign a short distance further up at the slope and curve to the neighbor's property. It was clear to me, they posted the sign stating, "Private property, no entrance," because visitors to Skyline Vineyard were winding up the hill at their home, and they were being negatively affected by that. Clearly, the impact for them is not negligible. The original six-bedroom, and then five-bedroom B&amp;B use originally sought by the Fords back in 2012 was denied based in large part on the private road condition, particularly the entrance situation at Route 211. Since then, there have been repeated requests for expansion and repeated violations, the sale and transfer of the LLC to the current owners, and a continued pattern of violations, all of which ultimately led to the revocation of the original expanded special use permit. The issues that led to the revocation in January of 2020, adverse impacts on neighboring properties, not being in accordance with zoning district regulations, impairment to the value of neighboring properties, generation of vehicular traffic that is hazardous or conflicting with existing and anticipated traffic, not being in accordance with the comp plan, not meeting applicable road standards, all still currently exist. None of that has changed. And I'll just add, live here, because listening to prior comments tonight, I'll just add, the Planning Commission had a hearing at which numerous people, including Mr. Shuland, Planning Commissioner, just that morning of that hearing, mentioned safety issues and near misses with that entrance. There is a staff report, not, there isn't just Michelle's staff report, there is video that can be reviewed of that hearing, and I would suggest that maybe in the future, an attorney review that to get a better sense, rather than just reading the staff report. Safety issues were raised by quite a few additional people present at the Planning Commission hearing, and to say that there hasn't been a problem is not only disingenuous but inaccurate. I find the argument that a five-bedroom B&amp;B use is somehow less impactful than a fully-occupied home with five bedrooms a bit disingenuous. That's from the application. Fruit trees and ferns are agriculture. They're not agritourism. The co-op engineer count of 20 vehicles a day, I can tell you, I go down there maybe once a month for dog food, and I think they need to go and check that again, because in the 20 or 30 minutes that I'm there, depending on who's pulling what trailer and what truck is coming in and out, I would suggest that that is a very low count. This is the wrong location for the continued expansion of his business ventures. And you don't wait for a serious accident in a location before you consider safety concerns and implications. I find the contention that lodging tax revenue should be a primary consideration here, rather than compliance with our ordinance requirements, equally disingenuous. Tourism should not be to the negative detriment of other residents. This application has so many issues, I don't realistically see how it can be approved, and I urge the board to recommend denial. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the courtroom? Not seeing anybody. We do have a couple of people on Zoom. Anybody wishing to comment, please put your Zoom hand up. Not seeing a Zoom hand. I will close the public hearing and open it up to the board for discussion.
Madam Chair, I'll get this started, since this is in my voting district, and I've met with the Hendricksons previously and recently, and also with most of the folks who live along Clark Lane. First of all, I want to compliment my colleague Supervisor Smith for making a very clear and emphatic statement that questions of agritourism, which frankly were raised by Hendrickson's counsel tonight, really conflate a much, conflate issues that I think unnecessarily complicate what for me is a relatively straightforward decision that does not have to go beyond the plain language of our zoning ordinance. And so with that, in reference to the general standards in plain language of Section 17047C and Section 17047G, and also the type 2 road standard articulated in Section 17066K6 of our zoning ordinance, and incorporating by reference the separate and thoroughly articulated findings of both county zoning staff and the Rappahannock County Planning Commission, I will put forward a motion to deny special exception permit application, SC 24-0305, for the following reasons. Number one, unresolved problems related to both the configuration and the location of a non-conforming entrance to Clark Lane, which is located in a commercial overlay district. Number two, the fact that the non-conforming configuration of Clark Lane does not even rise to the type 2 road standard required by our zoning ordinance for transient occupancy uses. And three, a clear understanding and recognition that approval by our board of this special exception, special exception permit application would only exacerbate the ongoing non-conforming use of Clark Lane by adding additional commercial traffic to it. And that's my motion.
Your motion, do I have a second?
Guess I'll second it.
And a second, now discussion.
Yeah. I would like to say, yeah, it's unfortunate that the conversation tonight took the agricultural, I mean, the agritourism route. Even Virginia Tourism Corporation calls, all of the tax dollars that we're talking about, they talk about that in terms of leisure spending, which will encompass everything. You know, so I certainly don't want anyone pitting agritourism to be a bad thing. I don't want anyone using it to prop up maybe some things that aren't good fits for our county. Because I am a big fan, it's no secret, I am a big fan and supporter of our, our small tourism industry in Rappahannock. I appreciate what our small businesses do and how they can attract people to our county and encourage money spent. And then I love for those people to safely leave, and so that we can have our dark skies and sleep peacefully at night. With that, though, there are a couple of things said today that I just want to point out, is, you know, there was a lot of talk about the... there was a lot of talk about the entrance, a lot of talk about the number of cars that will be in and out, the changes to the traffic to that small road. So now we're talking about the law of probability, right? Everyone was talking, there hasn't been an accident, there hasn't been an accident, but, you know, if you only have one car up and down the road, the chances of an accident are slim to none. If you have 200 up and down that road, the law of probability starts to jump in, right? The other thing that I think is really interesting as we're talking about safety, just in today's 2 o'clock meeting, on an unrelated topic, the sheriff shared some, a report, a third party, it's a third-party provider, shared a report. They did a study of speeding in front of our two schools, very close to Clark Lane, to Christmas Tree Lane. They took a snapshot between Monday and Friday, I think it was the first week in December, I believe, last year. Do you know that while our school lights were flashing, while the school zone lights were flashing, it was close to 10% of all cars that went through that area were speeding? And if I remember, my colleagues can correct me, if I remember correctly, they said the cars were in excess of 20 miles per hour to be caught.
Over 10.
Okay, 10. So that's why those school lights are flashing, and that's how many people we had through that area, you know, at an unacceptable speed. So rationale would tell me that if those lights aren't flashing, and, you know, everyone's feeling pretty safe, that they can speed without being caught, you know, I do believe that there could be some safety issues there. And then lastly, I do think you take in consideration neighbors. It was an excellent point, this is on a private lane, so you're sharing, you're sharing that entrance with people who've come here and chosen to make a home. So I heard all of that while we were sitting here tonight. I appreciate, again, I appreciate all of the dollars that our small businesses bring into our county. But I have shared with a constituent or two that I look at our, I consider our, I call our Planning Commission the Marines of our zoning, they go in first. And while I understand that none of us are perfect, and we're not always going to get it right every single time, I really lean on those reports because we have how many people on that commission from all parts of our county? And, you know, I have to take in consideration the neighbors and that recommendation.
Thank you.
I would just add to echo Ms. Koma's comment. General standards, 170-52, is first answer on every application that we receive. The proposed use shall be such that it will not adversely affect the use or development of neighboring lots, and shall be in accordance with the applicable zoning district regulations. The location size and height of the building structures, walls and fences, and the nature and the extent of the screening, buffering, and landscaping shall be such that the use will not hinder or discourage the appropriate development or use of the nearby land or buildings, or impair the value thereof. At the Planning Commission level, there was an application for a short-term tourist rental that we received earlier this year. I know you're aware, Chair Donahue, it was up there on, was it Pine Lane? Fox Lane?
Virginia.
Virginia Pine. It's got the little fox on the sign now.
Yep.
And that was a private lane, and it was those folks' home. And while certainly the Commonwealth of Virginia has oversight over the agritourism operations on the property, I certainly don't want those to enter into the conversation. The private lane like this, I think there's certainly a very reasonable argument to be made that it's clear when there are so many factors with the entrance and the road conditions themselves, that it is certainly safer to have people familiar with those road conditions driving that road than strangers who have never been there before. And that was a strong, strong sentiment in Chester Gap with that application, and it rings very true for me on this application as well. I will say certainly what the Commonwealth of Virginia has allowed with agritourism, I don't really have comment to say it's the stacking of the uses that amplify the impact of this additional use, which is not a byright use. And for those reasons, I find it to be additionally and especially impactful to the neighbors because they're already affected by so many things that Richmond has taken away from us as a county. And there's nothing we can do about that. And I just wanted to capture that, I talked at some length about this at the Planning Commission as well. I know we've heard from the neighbors on past applications, and certainly we always want to give the applicants a clean slate and a fair shot, just all of the things that come along with the multiple operations. It's very impactful, and that's, once that clears the entrance to the winery, it becomes a very steep and winding lane that basically takes you directly in front of the additional residences on that road. It's a total invasion of privacy, total invasion of privacy. And we've heard on previous applications that, as Ms. Hunt noted, people do venture up there. And we've heard in the past from folks that live in my district have had close calls when leaving that entrance on 211. So I just, I appreciate all the business you all bring to the county. Certainly, you're obviously very savvy business people. There's no doubt about it, and you put out an excellent product that people really enjoy, and are to be commended for that. Thank you.
Thank you. And, I mean, I think you guys covered pretty much everything I have to say. I know the citizens that live on Clark Lane have been, I feel like this has been going on since I moved here 24 years ago, but I know it hasn't been that long, but I just know that you've been coming to all of these meetings and speaking at all of these meetings, so it's not like this is the first time that we're hearing from you because I felt like that was something that was said earlier, that, why aren't people complaining? Well, you guys come every time we have these public hearings. So I appreciate that you're here again and the situation that you're in. And I do, I mean, I used to own a restaurant. I like tourism, I like the money it brings into the county. But I think our county goal is always to not negatively impact the neighbors. And I just feel like this particular property has had a battle even before you guys were the owners. I often think that our staff does a very good job of looking at our zoning and making sure that the advice given is accurate. And I know the Planning Commission takes it all very seriously, and I love the Marine concept.
They go in first.
That's a good one.
What a film that.
And I appreciate our attorney and county administrator for doing all the work they do. So I have to, in my mind, believe their information is accurate. And if we've got a problem with information that VDOT gave us, you know, we need to hear that. But it seems to me that VDOT has had this information here for, I think you said, two years, it's the same. So I just don't feel like a change has been proven needed.
Got to mention two short things.
Yes, sir.
So the staff report does identify that staff reviewed Clark Lane in type 2 standards. I reviewed it, I am a professional engineer. So we'll settle that. I reviewed Clark Lane, I am a professional engineer.
In answer to your point of order, I would just note that Mr. Curry asked to be acknowledged, and the chairman acknowledged Mr. Curry, and gave him permission to speak.
It was called the question whether anybody reviewed the road. They did, that was me. And I also want to say that this body, after several years of seeing issues with transient rentals on private roads, made the legislative decision to modify the zoning ordinance in 2021 to bolster the protections on private roads. And they modified it to add the type 2 standard requirement to 17066k. If there is a thought that's been a moving target or moving requirement, it has been a moving requirement because the board has adjusted the ordinance to match what the community needs through the legislative process. And so that requirement was added in 2021. It is different than when the original B&Bs were permitted, whenever, 2015, 16, whenever that was. So I just want to be clear that it is a requirement today, and it has been suspended.
You know, Subpart 6 of 17066k.
All right, any other discussion? Do we need a roll call or not?
Yeah, it can't hurt.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote. Ms. Koma, to, you made the motion, I think.
It was a motion, motion to deny the permit application.
Aye.
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 And I also.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to public hearing ordinance amendment, RCC Chapter 151.
This topic was discussed with the board at your last meeting where the modifications were shared. Your current Article 11 of Chapter 151 speaks to your ability to provide certain redevelopment areas, conservation areas, and rehabilitation. It allows you to set up state-enabled language, allows you to set up a mechanism to provide some tax relief to people who invest in some derelict properties. The ordinance has been advertised for this public hearing in accordance with Code of Virginia 1521427, and that was twice in the paper, at least seven days before today. And unless there's any questions about this, which I'm happy to try to respond to, you can open the public hearing.
Okay, all right, I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please be recognized and come up to the mic. Yes, sir.
Ron McElitt, Jackson District. I just read this over tonight, and obviously you have to pass it because it's a, you know, it's a change at the state level that we have to adapt it to. But in reading the ordinance, I found it very interesting because the part, establishment of districts, A, it says designated areas, designated areas, designated areas. Part B talks about designated areas. You get down to the limitations or whatever, and it refers to 151-46, well, actually, it's 146, but I think it changed to 147 anyways. But when you get down to 151-47, which is about, what this ordinance is all about is that it has to do with designated redevelopment areas, conservation areas, and rehabilitation districts, and it says reserved. So we don't have any, apparently, they've never been designated. And I think perhaps what has happened, and Mr. Curtis brought this up before at times, is that in our ordinances, because they were borrowed from Fairfax or Falkir or whatever, and it seems to me that on this one, they borrowed the ordinance, but when it came to designated areas, there was, they couldn't use the designated areas from the community or the county that they took them from, so they just left it blank, figuring they'd come back at a later time or something and fill it in, but it's not filled in. So the ordinance itself, and like I said, you've got to make the change, but it's kind of a meaningless ordinance at this point because it doesn't designate any areas that it applies to. And it's not your fault.
Thank you.
Karen Hunt, Jackson District. Regarding the proposed ordinance amendment pertaining to redevelopment areas, conservation areas, and rehabilitation, the Board of Supervisors has my letter sent via email dated August 4. The initial line of inquiry by the board may be well-intentioned, but I believe there is misunderstanding about what the precursor to the tax abatement component actually requires. I'm still researching state code and other jurisdictions ordinances, but this appears to be a very nuanced issue, and I would suggest that we need to proceed with caution here. Moving ahead with amending and further defining this ordinance, which it appears might not have been fully understood when initially created in 2010, has significant implications far beyond the tax abatement consideration, which seems like it is perhaps guiding the initial discussion. I believe that if we, as a county, move forward with defining specific areas and districts in need of development predicated on specific blight concerns, we may find this spurs a very different kind of response from development interests than what we want or hope for. We have had and continue to have individuals, companies, and corporations who buy and rehabilitate older properties in Rappahannock. We have examples of farmhouse that have been renovated and apple packing sheds that have been repurposed. The restoration of an old house on Route 211 at Indian Run in Amistville is just one ongoing example. I want to emphasize that all that is being done without creating and defining districts to incentivize it, and without the county giving up tax revenue for 15 to 30 years. We are appropriately sensitive to the tax implications of decisions in this county, and I urge the board to continue to bear that in mind as this ordinance is discussed. Supervisor Carney commented during the July 1 board discussion on this topic that we do not have a lot of land in Rappahannock that is destroyed. And Chair Donahue seemed to concur that there are not a lot of properties in bad shape. There are buildings that have seen better times, but they are predominantly spread out and not clustered in a specific geographic area that can be considered a defined area of blight. Please do not let the initial attraction of a potential tax abatement component guide the discussion here. It's way more than that. We want to be exceedingly thoughtful and careful about when and where we draw lines around areas. I think we are putting the cart before the horse here without fully understanding what this entails. I would suggest that it would be very beneficial for the county to have specific guidance from someone with expertise in zoning ordinance law weighing in here. I respectfully ask the board to table any decision about moving this forward until more definitive information is obtained concerning all the implications here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Not seeing anybody else in the courtroom. There is one person still on Zoom. If you wish to speak, please raise your Zoom hand. All right. Not seeing a Zoom hand. I will close the public hearing and open it up to the board.
Sure. I just have two questions. The first one, I've been talking for some time about, it's the worst acronym, and I haven't come up with anything better, but I've said it before to you all, and I call it FIPRIP, Farm Property Renovation Program. And the spirit of it is to go to this question of, it seems like the perennial question of lack of, quote unquote, affordable housing in the county, and the fact that, you know, I can think off the top of my head of probably a dozen large agricultural properties with multiple dwellings that are uninhabited or probably shouldn't be inhabited, not to mention our, some of the housing statistics we've seen from the Regional Commission and elsewhere to show that there are certain dwellings in Rappahannock County that lack plumbing, electricity, et cetera. My idea a long time ago was going to the affordable housing question. How could we incentivize property owners to put money into these otherwise uninhabitable properties to bring them into our rental housing stock? So my first question is, to what extent, and I've been told that outright tax abatement, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought I understood that outright property tax abatement could not be used as a basis for incentivizing such renovation efforts. And that may be number two, the only possible approach to incentivization would be either capping or setting at a very low value, the assessed value of a property for some period of time. So I guess my first question is, to what extent does this ordinance in its revised form get us any closer to this idea that I, as just one member of our board, have raised in the past, what can we do to incentivize people to put into buildings that maybe they just don't have any interest in, or perhaps even the resources to renovate? And then the number two, I just want to understand, and I apologize if I've lost track of this, but the origin of these changes and how we got here today.
So a big picture, I'll say, you can picture this as a shelf upon which to place books, and this board has not placed books.
Okay.
Since it's been put in place. And the shelf's gotten pretty dusty, and the state has told us we need to clean the shelf off. So you're cleaning the shelf off and getting it ready to place books. I 100% agree that when you define what book's going on that shelf, you need to really think about it, pay attention to make sure you're drawing within lines of the intent of the enabling legislation, whether it be a geographical area, or there are other ways you can bundle properties, agriculture, or something like that.
Mills. It'd be crazy to see mills.
And so that is a legal question that needs to be parsed very carefully. So there was, I think, a particular tourist home that came up for consideration. It was an old house that had sat vacant for 15 years. And so those owners found a way to make an investment into that house to bring it back into use. And I think it occurred to Ms. Smith at that time, there's a lot of houses out there that fall into this similar situation. Why are they not?
Well, it's good.
Yeah. Why are they not? Why are they not garnering interest to make them habitable for our community to live in?
Okay.
And it was called to attention, there is this shelf out there. And so we looked at it in the office and said, wow, that's on date.
Yeah.
And looked at the enabling state legislation. It had changed in 2011 and then 2020. And so I think this, our ordinance is in line with 2011, not with 2020. And so we said, before you consider putting any books on this shelf, let's firm up the shelf. So this is what this is doing. Now, what can you do? That's defined here. The partial, you can exempt part of the value of the improvement, not the land. Okay? So if somebody's going to improve a structure, you can reduce the taxes due on that. It doesn't affect the assessed value, but it's an abatement for the taxes on part of the improvement. So it's very nuanced. And the partial exemption provided by the local governing body shall be provided in low ordinance and shall be either an amount equal to the increase in assessed value or a percentage of such increase resulting from the construction of the new structure or other improvement to the real estate as determined by the commissioner of revenue, or an amount up to 50% of the cost of such construction or improvement as determined by ordinance. And so that's what this would allow to an identified area. And what does area mean? We'll get there when we figure out what books to put on the shelf.
So this is exciting. So unbeknownst to me, my colleague here, your fault.
My fault entirely.
You brought it up. And so now, hallelujah, my idea, speaking of shelves, that was, well, we'll just mix metaphors, my idea that was on the back burner now has a dusted off shelf to become a book to talk about. But the point is that this brings into focus, perhaps, a mechanism in our ordinance that we could use as a foundation for some kind of program.
And is it enough to bridge the gap to make an investment viable?
Is there anything in the Code of Virginia and by association in our ordinance that would allow us to keep property assessments at a sort of artificially low level for a period of time to create a real incentive? Because that language, to me, sounds like it ain't going to amount to a lot. And if that's what we're basically allowed to do, I'm not as excited as I otherwise might be by us dusting off the shelf tomorrow. Your metaphor.
Yeah. Not that I'm aware of. There's a lot of state code out there.
Okay.
And not that I'm aware of in our local ordinance, for sure, but there could be things that we're unable to do that we don't do.
Okay.
But we are restricted. This isn't a cure-all, but it's a measured approach to try to incentivize investment.
Okay.
This ordinance language originated, from my understanding and discussions with previous board members, in an ordinance review with Mike Chandler, who encouraged them to put it in. They put it in. It's still empty. It's never been used. We are adding language that would allow us to use it at this time by making the designations. We're just updating to align with code.
Because we're not defining areas or?
Correct.
And so this is truly foundational ordinance language.
So someday, 15147 would have A, such and such area, defines what the area, what the characteristics of the area is and what the abatement rules are.
So.
And then B, C, D, if you wanted to.
And not to, I don't want to get too far into the weeds, but that language about, we'll call it reducing potential property tax liability, which would go to the Revenue Commissioner, it sounds a lot to me like when the Revenue Commissioner is trying to come up with her aggregate property value number for budgeting purposes, and she gets through all the easy stuff, and then you go to her office and you're like, what are you doing? And she's like, I've got a folder of all the building permits for all the stuff that's currently being built, and I've got to figure out how to value these properties. And that kind of, that kind of analysis is really down in dirty detailed stuff, and it truly does not get me excited to think that that's what we might be relegated to that kind of, oh, well, we can cut you a $300 break if you decide to renovate a falling down farmhouse on your property. I mean, I guess we can cross that bridge later. I was kind of excited initially that this is going to be like a watershed moment in the history of Rappahannock County, and instead it feels like the slow march of government. But anyway, the march, it seems, is in the right direction. So without introducing more metaphors into this discussion, I'll leave it at that.
Well, dusting it off also gives us an opportunity to see how the public feels about it, if people have a reaction to it. And maybe, maybe it will never be used either.
And I do want.
But it does beg the question, if we never use it, why is it there?
It's an opportunity. Anytime you add a book, it's modifying the ordinance, requiring a public hearing.
And if we find out, and if we find out somewhere out there in the Code of Virginia, there's enabling legislation that says, hey, if you want to exercise local discretion to value a property at a dollar for 10 years, we can do that, right?
Yeah. If there's enabling legislation that says it, yes.
And you're saying that you're not going to find that?
I don't think so.
All right.
This sounds like it's a problem in and of itself, or creating new problems.
Yeah, but I mean.
I do want to be clear, this does not change the assessed value of the property. The true value of the property remains the same.
Yeah.
You know, and that's used all over the place, including terrible formulas like the LCI. None of that changes, but locally, we can tax it slightly differently.
Yeah. And I'd have to really sit down and think about what that is, because.
Not a particular home or?
Yeah. I mean, it's hard to even wrap my.
For a big industrial property in another locality, it might be really meaningful.
Yeah.
For a farmhouse, maybe not.
Okay. So this is a starting point. This is a proposed ordinance language, and so we need to vote to adopt it, right?
You can choose to do that.
Well, it's your fault, so.
It is my fault. So I will make a motion that we adopt the revisions to the chapter 151 taxation portion of the ordinance as they appear in the agenda this evening.
I will second Supervisor Smith's motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Roll call vote.
Yep. All right. Hearing none. Roll call. Ms. Comer?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
And I also.
It's a start.
So it has to be areas and areas and districts. It can't be like all Apple houses?
Well, that's where the lawyers come in.
Okay. All right. We did everything else after public comment, correct? So we're now in the public comment?
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, you're under public comment.
For those of you who are still here and wish to speak during public comment, this is your time. If you are interested, please be recognized, come up, give us your name and your district, and can be about anything to me.
Is the temporary sign ordinance going to be an open discussion or given a public comment?
It's probably going to be a short discussion.
I think I would do it now under public comment.
Okay. Then I have a comment. We know.
Sorry. I do what I do.
I think it's a three-peat, not a.
Yes.
Anyways, this is just, this is a small, easy one, and it came from the last discussion because there was this, the discussion on flag poles and flags, and we felt that, you know, that what I got the drift of that was that we really don't need a restriction on that or whatever. Well, I did some research, and we need a restriction on that because, and I'll just read you one example, and this is from February 24, and this is up in Maine, in a little town called Columbia Falls, Maine, where a family that owned a bunch of property, and they were very well-meaning, and they wanted to make a tribute to veterans. And so here's what they wanted to build, a 1,461-foot flag pole, which would have a flag on it that was the size of one and a half football fields in the middle of nowhere. And with community pressure, whatever, it finally got, you know, it went away. But if you don't have the restriction, we could face this in that, you know, somebody can put up, you know, if it's not there, so it's real easy, make it, my suggestion would be 30 feet, because I've made flag poles at times out of pipe or whatever, and you use 10-foot sections. And 20 is what I've got in my yard, but like at the school, that's higher, but like 30 feet or 35, but just put a restriction on it, on the height, and that normally controls the size of the flag that goes on it anyways and keeps the size down. Because there are areas which, down in Northern Virginia, whatever, where you see the businesses that have the huge flags flying there, whatever, and those are just for advertising purposes for the most part. So just in doing the side ordinance, please consider that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
I feel like you guys should tap out.
Karen Hunt, Jackson District. I really wasn't going to say anything, but if Ron gets a three-for, you know, like, I've got to give him a run for the money. So I'm just going to win this because I'm just up here to have my three-for. But actually, this is directed at Supervisor Whitson, because one of the things, as we're talking about signs, and I look around, is people sticking stuff on telephone poles. And I read something where you had had somebody, where they had had signs up high, and you tried to get VDOT and VDOT, well, you had to get the power company or whatever, and you wound up calling the person who put the stuff up there. And I want to know if it's the we buy junk cars with the phone number, because they are everywhere. They're on Weaver Road, they're on Viewtown Road, and I was just curious if that was the one, because we need to have them come take a few more down.
No, it's not that one. And it was at Massey's Corner, and it was up a power pole, and it's no longer there.
Yeah, I know it's no longer there. I'm looking for help.
And Rappahannock Electric Co-op took care of it.
Okay.
And in taking care of it, they incurred costs. And so the person who put up the sign presumably will get an invoice for it being removed.
Can we maybe adopt that model?
I don't know. I mean.
Jackson District Supervisor Comer, for the ones that we have in Jackson District.
It was a, it was a very, it was a, I would say, a semi-permanent sign.
Yeah.
Put atop a power pole in one of the most beautiful vistas of our county. And so as a courtesy, I contacted, because the phone number of the business was on it, so I called that number. And I said, hey, you know, you have a advertisement on a power pole in the most beautiful vista in Rappahannock County.
Come take it down.
And please, would you take it down? And he said, I'm just trying to make a living. And I said, well, you're not going to make a very good living in Rappahannock County by putting a sign in the middle of our most beautiful vista. So it's probably better to use a newspaper or social media advertise. But, I mean, it wasn't a big deal, but it was, it went up, and many people mentioned it to me. And so I tried to do the right thing by contacting the business owner, and a month later, it was still there, so.
Well, I'll work with my supervisor, see what we can do with that 540272, we buy junk cars.
Yeah, but no, VDOT, but to your point, VDOT, the day after we raised the question about all these state signs and medians and stuff. Gary contacted them and.
Looks much better.
What a difference. I mean, yeah. So I think, I think we're headed in the right direction.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Very responsive to that, to those requests. Because I had a request actually to pull up the calendar.
Not getting more public comment time.
Well, it's my fault. I.
It's his fault.
I encouraged it.
Okay. Anybody else wishing to speak? Anyone online wishing to speak? No. All right. We'll close public comment. Next, I think we're into temporary signs.
If I could just pull up that presentation I did before and go right to the end, where I say, thank you, public. And the second bullet, I would encourage our public commentators to read that, and that's been highlighted and identified by the board, is flagpole height is something that needs to be addressed. So we'll just check that off the list. Mr. Carney reached out to Ms. Chair Donahue earlier and submitted some comments in writing. This was during their day session, I think, so I stuck them up here just. stuck them up here, just so you could have that input, and Art, in my request to the board is that you identify the concepts that you would like incorporated into the sign ordinance, and Art and I will wrap those concepts in words. And try to make it, make those words so the common citizen can understand what they mean.
Can you zoom in on that a little bit?
Possibly. Is that better?
Yeah. Okay, no carve-outs, light poles should be no higher than 1,250 feet? Oh, it's limited 35 feet, which is close to what Mr. Mc, off-premise, what's, off-premise is mostly the agricultural stuff, right? Limited 10.
That's just 102, so I assume it's what it means. So he's got, setting up different rules for different times of year, I think you could probably do that. As long as they apply consistently for, you know, every light zone property. No animated, 60 days with 30-day extension, June to November, so our, I guess, festival season and fall stuff.
That seems very arbitrary.
I don't know.
I mean, how, how would we justify that?
Well, it's not content based, but I, I have other, I mean, I just worry about enforceability, it's just like, time, I mean, I, it's thoughtful, but it's in commercial December and May 50 square.
I think changing it on a time of year does, uh, cause, it adds some opportunity for confusion where a citizen just didn't, doesn't realize it, or they put a sign up in May for 60 days, or I guess more likely in November 1 for 60 days, and it's okay for the first 30 days, but the second 30 days is too big. I think it adds some complexities.
So we just got these today?
He, he just emailed them from vacation.
He's on his way to vacation.
He's participating in conversation right now.
Super helpful. I mean, I, I'll just, I've been trying to think of a simple way to approach the temporary sign thing based on kind of where I'd like to end up, and to me, this is helpful, but it's, I think, I think our goal should be simplicity and reasonableness, so if you have an ice cream truck, you should be able to put up a sign. Ideally, what I have in mind is a food truck, an ice cream truck, a nano brewery, et cetera. You should be able to put up a, like a, and I don't know how we define it or describe it, but like in my mind, like an A-frame sign, or maybe some, some kind of sign that basically goes up and comes down during, while you're operating. Sherry Fickell from Hopkins Ordinary, I think articulated it really well. She said, when we're open, I go out and I put up a sign, and when we close, I take it down. And I think that, and I'd be interested, once we finally get to a point of adopting our ordinance, I'd be interested to hear from people in that situation, if that's adequate, if that gives them enough public exposure to, to do, to run their ice cream truck, or their brewery, or their food truck, whatever. So I, I, I personally think that these A-frame type signs that are put up and taken down within the same day should be allowed. And that goes to this workshop at the, at the firehouse in Washington, that goes to the East Woods and their Japanese maple nursery, they put it up while they're open during the season, and they take it down each day, and, and that's it. Those make sense to me. I think for me, temporary, or, um, temporary sort of off-site signs that direct people are, are orchards and, and farm, farm store type operations make good sense, and we should allow those, and I just wanna make sure that we can allow those if we do the third thing, which I'd like to do, which is basically in-zone ag and conservation areas otherwise have no signs, no temporary signs, none. Like, like the cleanliness, the relative cleanliness that we all saw after VDOT jumped on task the day after our meeting, it was just like, what a relief. You know, medians cleaned of temporary signs, and I think most people can appreciate how nice that looks and feels. So I don't know how, how we can say no temporary signs in zone ag or conservation areas. This, to me, and I appreciate Mr. Carney's input, really tough to enforce, I don't know how we would deal with the seasonality-based rules, I don't know how we would expect our staff to enforce it. And then these different square foot things, descriptions, really, I think it gets complicated, and and then I guess finally, I don't know what that means for political signs. Like, could we ever, and I, you know, could we ever say in-zone conservation and ag areas, if we say no temporary signs, can we say that?
Yes, that means no political signs, huh?
Yeah, so that's probably not workable.
And that's where the Reed issue, Gilbert, gets really tricky.
It is so hard.
You want to provide for, uh, but you have to provide for all, and, and there is a difference between commercial speak and non-commercial, and you can make some distinctions there, but it's, it's tricky. What staff tried to do with the draft relative to off-premise, to keep the raid caverns, for example, being able to put an off-premise sign somewhere, is to say a prerequisite to have an off-premise sign, and something more than a directional sign, which is just business this, this direction, is that, A, you have to be on a secondary highway.
Right.
And B, your business on the secondary highway has to have a sign permit for that parcel, so if you have a sign permit for your fruit stand down the back lane, then you're allowed to apply for this off-premise sign.
Okay.
If you don't have that sign permit, you're not eligible.
But those, the sign permit at the location of a place like that is related to not a temporary sign?
Right, but you could put the same sort of.
Off-premise sign somewhere on.
You could say, if you have a sign permit at this distant place, you can have a temporary sign.
A temporary off-premise sign.
Well, kinda all, we can't read what the sign says to decide whether it, whether it can go there or not, so if I stick a temporary sign in my yard, what does off-premise even mean? I mean, you can't, you can't read the face, so whether it says vote for this person or eat at Joe's.
Or Happy Birthday Gary.
Well, right. If they spell it my way, it'd be very.
I know how to spell your name.
Yeah, but, so my point is, if somebody sticks a yard sign in their yard, there's no, there's really no distinction of on-premise, off-premise, 'cause it can say anything they want it to say. So if they wanna advertise for the buddy down the next road, and you allow off, you allow a temporary sign in your yard, it can say vote for the favorite person, or hope has no home, as Art would say. Or it could, or it could, you know, advertise the fruit, fruit stand, and so.
Okay.
It makes it tricky.
So it sounds like we're back to in-zone ag and conservation areas. We would allow temporary signs up to some square footage, and maybe or maybe not it relates to the location of the sign, the square footage could depend on the location of the sign, uh, in terms of setback from a highway, right?
It could be the setback from a highway, the zoning district.
Right, but even there, I begin to go, oh, complicated, hard to enforce, and so I guess ultimately, I'm hoping we can end up somewhere that is super simple, that, that is, that, an ordinance that complies with Reed v. Gilbert, um, and that basically anyone can pick up in two minutes and understand what the rules are, and to me, and again, I appreciate that Mr. Carney did this well away, I just think time period and different square footage, depending on what time of the year, is way too much, is way too much, and I think if we can't, if we can't go so far as to say no temporary signs in zone ag and conservation areas without getting into First Amendment problems, then, okay, we're gonna allow temporary signs, because people definitely wanna put up a sign to support their, you know, currently their national presidential candidate, some people, uh, wanna put up signs. And we can't get in the way of that, so to me, it seems like we're gonna have to allow temporary signs any, like in zone ag and conservation areas, and then it just comes down to.
How big, how long, and?
How big is, that's it, and, and I guess we can define temporary, which for the time being seems like we're hovering around either 60 or 90 days. And I think that the current zoning, I'm sorry, the current sign ordinance language, which talks about political signs.
Can't do that anymore.
We can't, I know we can't do that anymore, but I remember whatever the time limits are seemed about right.
Yeah, I think it was 90 days.
It was like X days before and X days after an election.
Yeah, I feel like, um, you had to have them collected by the end of November.
They were probably all in the right of way anyway, not in my first place.
Not mine either.
I have been looking at Hannover County, which is where I grew up, and they had a temporary sign permit that I gave Gary the form, in case it would help you guys in any way, share perform. The one thing I, I am still hung up, and I know this is ridiculous, but using the word billboard on anything in my mind is the big ginormous sign next to 95 on the way to Kings Dominion. Hannover County does not use billboard anywhere, they have kind of flat signs or, um, detached, let's see, double-faced sign, flat sign or wall sign, um, ground sign, so they, they have terminology that at least for the billboard, makes a lot more sense to me to say flat sign, here's the size, um, 'cause that's what it is. And then you don't get confused between the state law against billboards versus, it's just complicated. But I, I do think they have some, they've got a really good detailed flag, um, section, and it talks about whether it's a United States flag versus something else, and the height of the poles, and if there's more than one pole, how the height goes from the tallest to slightly less and slightly less, so, um, you know, the, the United States flag is at the top, and the county flag could be next, and then your flag of whatever football team could be next, but they break out that information pretty detailed. So I, I can copy and paste and send some ideas based on what I'm seeing here. They've got sign size, not necessarily based on the building size or the lot size, it's, here's the sign size. And I just think it's a different way for us to look at things that might make more sense now in 2024.
Yeah.
That sounds good, if you can circulate it.
Yeah, I can give you the link, that's easy to do, um, and then they've got basically Division 7 sign regulations, and there's like one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, um, sections under that Division 7.
Probably 93 others out there that you can use as examples as well.
Yep, no, I, I get it. One of the things that Kier said before he went on vacation is find a place that does it well and research it.
Which is, yeah, and, right, and that's why, I mean, I'm looking right now, it's the one I've, uh, raised before. I'm looking at Door County, Wisconsin, which, if you haven't been to Wisconsin, you look at a map, it's the thumb, it's, it's, it's the thumb of the hand that is this shape of, that was Michigan. That's a mitten. They're all smitten with the mitten, as they say. We just, we don't even, we have so many good things in Wisconsin that we don't even have to talk about the shape of our state, they do. So, um, but nevertheless, we have this, we have a thumb, and the body of Green Bay is here, Lake Michigan is here, and the thumb is a peninsula. And that peninsula is itself a county, and that county is called Door County, D-O-O-R, and they do zoning really well. It is like, they call it the, the, the Nantucket of the Midwest, or the Cape Cod of the Midwest, whatever, and it is just decidedly, everything is under control, all the signs are squat and unobtrusive, and that's another model, I think, that, I mean, it's one that's familiar to me, that's the only reason I'm raising it, I think we'd find other good examples within the Commonwealth that would require us to think about in other states, um, underlying.
The sign ordinances are generally portable, I mean, state to state, everybody's trying to align with the Supreme Court decisions, and there really is, it's one area that you, you really can look further abroad.
Yeah, so, but I really just think we should keep it, I know we've been talking about this forever, and that's fine. But in the end, I don't wanna forget about where we started, and I believe where we started, notwithstanding the need to comply with Supreme Court precedent. But importantly, to end up somewhere that's simple, straightforward, easy for anyone to read and understand. And I, I feel like we started out with the goal of keeping it simple, and it's getting more and more complicated in terms of, oh, a square footage here, time of year, et cetera. Again, I really appreciate Supervisor Carney's point, but I'm gonna take full advantage of the fact that he's not here to respond. 'Cause he's in law school, and trust me, he's like in the mode to debate right now. But I, I appreciate where he's coming from, I just think for our little county, that's a lie, that's a lie.
I would just add to your, your list of keep it simple, and the list you just outlined. Whatever we do, we cannot, it, it must help our businesses, excuse me, I, I hope I didn't.
You didn't. No, no, we've been going a long time today, we're all there, Donna, don't worry.
Whatever we do, it, it needs to help our businesses, not hinder them, not tie their hands anymore than it needs to, so I would just want to add that to your, your list there.
Yeah, and I mean, sometimes to know where you're going, you have to look back at where you've been with this, and a, a large part of this proposed ordinance was crafted by staff for the purposes of identifying and allowing what they saw going on in the county without any complaints. It was in response
Yeah.
uh, to what, what was already in existence. I would just say with the, with the art, um, part of the sign ordinance, I've said it before, and I'll say it again, I certainly never thought when I ran for local office in my county, I would have to debate what art is and isn't. But here we are, and, um, we heard a lot of feedback initially when we were not heading in the direction of recognizing art, and now I think we're hearing feedback about the pitfalls of recognizing art. I expect we'll continue to get feedback on that topic from both sides.
Yeah. I think, I think we're, we're headed, we're headed hopefully in the right direction, it's just, I think we all, at least on our board as representatives, I think we all have kind of different ideas about where we're gonna end up, and I just want to emphasize, I think we should keep it simple, and it shouldn't be more than a matter of defining square footage based on some reasonable, reasonable, reasonably understood criteria.
I think the sign ordinance generally includes definitions, sets, sets forth different types of signs that might or might be allowed. And then also usually lists of those defined things, those you're not allowed to do, prohibited, right? And then tries to identify what you can do in the different zoning districts. And then tries to identify what you can do in the different zoning districts. And so if you like, then staff can try to prepare a new skeleton that the board can put flesh on to try to look at it as a, we, we originally were thinking we're going to start over. And then we thought, boy, that's going to be confusing for everybody to move from the old ordinance to a new ordinance that's totally unchanged. And so we decided we'll stick with the old ordinance and we'll just try to clean it up the best we can. Well, when you do that, you end up making a lot of changes and it gets confusing anyway. But that's where we ended up. We can start over and look at new skeletons from Door County, Hanover County, places that have done it subjectively well. And then allow the board to try to put flesh onto those skeletons of sizes, durations, things like that. Those are, those are the, really the, the major points that the community will want to speak to you eventually, you know, informal input and then formal input through public here.
Yeah, and I think we're also, at least in recent months, I think the focus has been on, I hate to say it, it's not really the sign ordinance, but the temporary sign part of the sign ordinance.
Yep.
Which is where I think we should stay until we resolve it.
Okay.
So that we can then, in my opinion, so that we can move on to other things like playpills and flags and, because otherwise it becomes a truly unmanageable mess. So I'd be willing to do what Supervisor Carney did for us, which again is very helpful and it definitely raises valid points for discussion. But I certainly am willing to just outline, now that we've gone back and forth on this for a long time, just outline what, at least from my perspective, what, what, what I think we should do on temporary signs by zoning district. I mean, what are, what are our zoning districts in the county?
They're grouped into really three things. You have resource preservation, which is ag and conservation.
Okay, so that broad category encompasses both.
Yeah, and then you have residential, which is two or three, three or four different residential.
R, R, whatever.
R five, R two, RV. Yep, and then you have commercial industrial.
Okay, that's an easy way to think about it.
Yep, so it's three buckets.
But I do think that there are definite nuances to
HC versus VC, totally different.
Versus village commercial, lot sizes, totally different animals.
Yep.
Speeds of vehicles, totally different animals.
Okay, so instead of three, then it's
Maybe four.
Well, then it's, isn't it?
VC, a village commercial is probably handled differently than a general commercial and highway commercial, which are more similar.
Okay.
And, and you know, small, small lot, not as intensive a use.
So temporary.
And probably, you know, right for the picking for a little set out, same day sign.
So, so basically upfront, simple definitions, what is a temporary sign? What is the duration? And what's allowed and not allowed in each district? And that's it? I think that's it. And, and in terms of specificity, to me, it's only square footage. And nobody's going to say that we're going against the precedent from Reed v. Gilbert because there's zero discussion about content. I think that's it.
And then make it cute.
What's that?
Make it cute.
Right.
Yeah, and so the, the animated thing comes into play, whether it's wind driven or flashy lights, and I think a lot of people don't like flashy lights, and I think there's consistency on that, I think, among the community. If you're going to have an internally lit sign, LEDs or whatever, the current ordinance says don't change it more than once an hour and it's not an animated sign. Okay. But a flag, an open flag in front of a business, is that something you want to allow? Because they're going to do it.
Yes.
I should add one, so Paul and Cookie Ball won, are my constituents, they own Baldwin's, they own the Quickie Mart. And I brought to their attention, hey, y'all might want to follow this or at least rely on me to keep you up to date on what's, what's being discussed in the commercial zone with respect to the Quickie Mart. And Paul's comment to me, which is important, and it's, it's nuanced, but I don't want to lose sight of this, and it would apply probably to settles for sure, and it might apply to other businesses I'm not immediately thinking of. But under the Baldwin's contract with Shell, they are required to put up certain signs to meet the obligations of their contract with Shell. So that's, I don't, in an effort to keep things simple, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that there, we are going to have to try to anticipate these kind of little nuanced details by putting things in ordinance that say, notwithstanding the above, if a business owner is required, you know, something like that.
When settles rebranded, when settles rebranded and brought golf in, I think, and, and so golf had a sign package and, you know, submitted to Michelle and she said, and that's square footage, like, you're over. And so they had, they had another sign that was there that wasn't important to golf or them, and they removed that sign to allow the golf to get the package.
Okay, so you've already dealt with this and
We worked together and got that done.
But it's like even the temporary wavy flag things, you know, I told Paul, I said, you know, people don't like those. He was like, hey, don't give me overtime, talk to Shell, they make me put that stuff up. So there's that. Again, it's kind of a side point, but
Now here, you're just hoping there's a gas station around the corner.
That's true. Like, we need our gas station, so. But I, it sounds like, it sounds like we could whittle this down to pretty simple stuff.
Yep.
And it's just square footage, what is, what is a temporary time period? Then how do we protect ice cream truck, food truck, a small business owner's ability to reasonably communicate that they're open and to attract business from passersby? And we, to Donna's point, we don't want to do anything that would undermine small businesses' ability to do business.
And even more so than doing business, I spoke to a business in Jackson and, you know, they said that their sign is a safety thing, that people don't see them. And then when they get to them, they either hard break or they pass and then they're turning around on our roads. Today, I think we have demonstrated multiple safety issues, you know, in our roads. So even more than doing business is priority number one, but, I mean, I don't know, we always talk, when we talk about the signs, we always talk about the ice cream. So if I'm coming home from out west and I don't see his sign that there's ice cream ahead and then I hard break because I see ice cream, you know, it becomes a safety thing, so.
All right, so I think we've got, it sounds like everybody's getting closer and closer to
Yeah, I'm happy to give my one pager of what I want the temporary sign ordinance to look like and maybe we can all do the same over time.
Yep.
And then get somewhere on it and then move on to the next part of it. But to someone's point earlier today, you know, we have stuff that's public safety, life and death on our agenda today and other days. This is not. So I'd rather just continue to incrementally move it forward, talk about it when we have time to talk about it, like tonight, and I think it's been useful. But I don't feel this overwhelming need, especially now that we see what VDOT's attention or REC's attention to signs where they shouldn't be, what a difference that makes in terms of how our county, county looks and feels. So if that effort continues, especially from VDOT's perspective, I already feel a lot better because we've been having this discussion and in parallel, we've gotten rid of a lot of signs that shouldn't be, been there in the first place.
Very true. All right, if you guys are willing to go on to matters presented by the board. Ms. Comer, do you have anything?
I do. Just two fun little things, as we're talking about businesses and because we were talking about tourism dollars and everything, I do want to just give a shout out to, we had two businesses in Amistville celebrate some milestones in the month of July. Gregos Winery celebrated 30 years and Magnolia celebrated 10. So, and a fun fact that I learned about Gregos was that over their 30 years in business, they have employed over 160 of our Rappahannock youths. So I just thought that was kind of cool and kind of fun. That family has done quite a bit for, gosh, for their industry, for our community. They were some of the founding folks of Stewart Field, of the, not Stewart Field, but the athletic, the, the ball league, so. And then of course Magnolia, 10 years.
Wow.
Fun.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
It's fun to think about, I think that was the first winery in the county
It was.
Was Gregos.
Technically, they were the second, they are now the oldest in the county.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay, there we go. And Oasis was over, but I think that was in Faukeer County. That was, that was, that was Rappahannock adjacent. I don't think I have anything.
Mr. Whitson?
No, thank you.
Well, I guess we're bookends, Ms. Comer. Rappahannock Sellers had their 24th anniversary recently. They're doing great and I'd love to have them in my district, great family. Lions Club had their annual picnic and we now know Mary Graham is their president. So it was very nice, well-attended at the park. I talked to Mr. Curry about the last court day we had where there was like 40 people sitting downstairs waiting to find out if they were going to be needed or not.
Yes.
I heard from a few people that if I had, if they had any doubt that I understood that they wanted to have a new courthouse, that they should, it should be given that day because 40 of them were in two rooms with an AC unit that I guess wasn't working well and no water because the water fountain's not working. And so they were like, let's get a new courtroom, courthouse.
In the meantime, can we get air conditioning in the drinking fountain?
There's window air conditioning downstairs, that's all we have.
Any bitty window unit.
We can maybe put a second window unit in it, but we don't really have good power, so we run new circuits.
I don't have
Very rare that we have
I don't have great windows either.
No.
I got a couple, but I bottled water temporary or something. Hopefully that doesn't happen often, but I thought
Yeah, and the drinking fountain, it's just a long story. If we take it out and put one in, now we have to put a cesspool on it.
I guess the other question is, and I don't know if this is allowed by court rules, but we have right across the street the Rack Theater and I don't know if, I don't know if jurors could be put in different space, just that's comfortable, but, and maybe like just try and anticipate what, like how many jurors are going to be brought in at the same time. It sounds like it's not a very frequent occurrence, but I, I don't know if the rules would allow for them to go somewhere nearby.
It was a 100-degree day was one of those days.
It was really hot.
Every day is
And, and no fans, like we could have maybe put some fans or something out if we had them.
Now, you know, it's hindsight and all that good stuff and I get it, but
Yeah.
if we know we're going to have a large
We got to come up with
number of jurors, we got to do something. So the final thing I have, and this is for the Public Safety Committee, I just recently took a six or seven module state fire required class online and EMS is required to take it as well because of the situations you could be in, but it was all on electric vehicle batteries and lithium ion batteries and the safety risk and what happens when one of them goes off. It is amazing if you have a moment on YouTube and you want to Google either of those car batteries catching on fire or lithium ion, it's, it's scary. So anyway, I wanted the Public Safety Committee to take it on because I think we should probably have a community safety event, just to educate the community on what we can do. Also, our fire and rescue volunteers are going to be, you know, at some point in the situation where we have EV cars in accidents, making sure that we have the appropriate training, the appropriate equipment. You've got to have a tow truck driver that knows how to deal with a electric vehicle car because they can reignite fairly easily.
Wow.
And they have to be taken to a specific area that is set up for one of these vehicles because they can actually reignite up to 30 days.
Wow.
I mean, it's just, it was mind-boggling. So anyway, I think it would be a great Public Safety Committee event for the community.
Good. That's something.
Would it also be like a recruitment event?
It could.
I mean, I'm all about tow truck recruitment events. We haven't had a picnic for a while, education.
Yep. Yes.
There you go.
But I think the entire population should be invited because it's good information to have.
Really good.
Yep. All right. Van normally does it.
Mission to charge.
I second it.
I'm sitting in a seat, I better do it, right?
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.